Like to call to order work session, regular meeting February 26, 2019. We're calling the work session to order, items for review and discussion. We find budget overview. Who's going to speak up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have just a few funds left, and Sheila will be walking us through those items for the budget overview for our last work session.
Yes, good evening. We have four funds left, and they are all capital project funds. And these funds are set aside to do special accounting just for projects that have special funding sources that we want to keep separate. And so if you turn to page 67, this is Fund 442, and this is the Major City Construction Fund. And there are two projects that are budgeted in this fund for fiscal year 2020. First, the Bell Ray Connector Trail, and this project is right here, and it's being funded with grant funds, and the match is being paid from the Park Sales Tax Fund. The total project cost is anticipated to be $844,000. $500,000 of this cost is expected to be funded with grant funds, and $344,000 is expected to be funded with Park Sales Tax dollars.
Page 67.
In addition, the second project that's budgeted in this fund is the Peculiar Drive and Outer Road, and easements and right-of-way acquisition is expected to be funded in fiscal year 2020 with a contribution that is being paid by the Belton-Cass Regional TDD in the amount of $203,000 in fiscal year 2020. Any questions about either of these projects? If not, you can turn to page 68. This is the Street Capital Projects Fund, and there are two projects that are being budgeted in this fund in fiscal year 2020. First is the Mullen and North Cass Parkway Project. Easements and engineering and design costs in the amount of $192,000 is expected to be funded with a contribution from the Belton-Cass Regional TDD in fiscal year 2020. And then the second project is the Outer Road Project from 155th to 163rd Street, and in fiscal year 2020, this project is being funded with grant funds and also a developer contribution from North Point, and the total project cost is anticipated to be $1,712,635. $984,318 of this cost is expected to be funded with grant funds, and $728,317 is expected to be funded with a developer contribution. Any questions? If you turn to the Sewer Impact Fee Fund, you can find this in your budget book on page 71. There are no projects that are being budgeted for fiscal year 2020.
Sheila, if you don't mind, I'm just going to interject really quick. I know you tell them page 71, but could you also tell them the fund number? Because that's where the tabs at, and it's really easier to hit the tab and then go to that page.
Fund 460.
Thanks.
And so there aren't any projects that are being budgeted in this fund. There are revenues anticipated of $58,800. And then the next page, Fund 462, the Water Impact Fee Fund. This is our last fund that we're going to cover tonight. There is water line replacement of $950,000 budgeted in this fund in fiscal year 2020. This water line replacement expands our water distribution system by replacing low diameter cast iron pipe with a minimum of eight-inch PVC or ductile iron water line. And that's important because these funds can only be used to expand our water distribution center, or system, sorry.
Okay, on the bottom line on that one, on revenues over expenditures, and I've asked you, I think, this before, on the amended budget 2019, it was $1,988. Are you on that line at the very bottom?
Mm-hmm.
736 was the last three numbers. And then at the bottom on the proposed budget is 154,674. Why the big discrepancy?
Well, because we're actually spending, we didn't spend any money. There were no expenditures in fiscal year 19, but there's going to be planned in fiscal year 2020, $950,000 of expenditures.
And what's that going for?
Water line replacement.
That was the pipe we were talking about. Do we know where?
I, go ahead, Celia. I believe that it's Hollywood.
Well, there's four different locations, and what we're doing is replacing all of our four-inch cast iron.
Right.
And Don knows the exact locations because he recommended that.
Oh, I like that. I like that. That's, woke up pretty early today, Don. That's good stuff.
The locations that we're looking at to replace this year are a section on Hollywood from South Scott to Cedar, a section on Cedar from Katrin to East South, a section on Pawnee that will run from Cambridge up to Lacy, and a section on Brookview, I believe. It's either Brookview or Brookside. I always get those two streets confused, but it's roughly from Lacy up to Coburn.
So that would be Ward 3, all Ward 3. Okay, my question then is, are they all iron right now?
Yes, sir.
Wow, it's like discovery.
All four-inch cast iron, at least 50, 60 years old.
How many years?
At least 50 to 60.
Okay, that's, again, that was a discovery. I'm glad I asked that. Well, I mean, I'm glad we're doing that. That's a good thing. That's really good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Will that cover that part of south of maybe Main Street? I mean, how much more we got to, you know, the city manager's pretty passionate about getting Old Town fixed up, so.
We still have a lot to go. All of Old Town is, pretty much anything south of Main Street is cast iron, especially from south of East South.
Have you ever drank any of that cast iron water?
Every day.
So what we're, so what we're trying to do is an annual program so that we, you know, whatever funding we have, we hit a little bit each year. So, and, you know, Don knows a lot of the areas with, well, we all know where the four inch is, but he knows the ones where there's been more point repairs and things like that, so that's kind of how we're selecting them.
So my question is, how much would it cost for you to get rid of all the cast iron in the city?
We'll have to get back with you on that.
Okay, because I'm just wondering in the future, 50, 60 years back, and I know I'm looking at your StanTech stuff that we shared, and we'll talk about that some other time, but it's 50, 60 years.
Right.
We're talking about our roads, we're talking about our water, we're talking about our wastewater, our storm water.
And then when we get the four inches done, we're going to the six-inch cast iron. So, yeah, there's a lot of improvements in our infrastructure needed.
It is cheaper? You're shaking your head no. Okay. Yeah, well, you know, but you're a real estate guy, so you could sell anything, you know. Got some swamp land over here. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What you got next?
The monthly financial report?
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions? Okay.
So I passed out the monthly financial report for you guys for your convenience, and if you look at, passed out two things. First of all, the monthly financial report, and then underneath that, there was a little packet of three pages from last year's monthly financial report at the same time, just in case you wanted to compare where we were a year ago compared to where we are now. So if you look at the variances from actual to expected, you can see that our utility grocery receipts taxes are ahead of where we anticipated. That is really due to our extreme weather conditions this year. And you can see that our property taxes are showing that they're ahead. That is really because there was, in lieu of tax payment, that is made every year from the proprietary funds to the general fund, and that was not actually transferred last year. So when that was discovered, we went ahead and transferred that this year. That was $115,000, so we're really a little bit down. I don't anticipate that we'll end the year down. I think we'll be right on budget, but I just wanted to point that out.
Proprietary funds, you said we didn't put it in.
We did not transfer the $115,000 in lieu of tax payment last year that was budgeted.
Because?
Because it was missed.
Okay.
So, and then when we discovered it, remember, we're on a cash basis, so we can't go back. We discovered it early in April, but we couldn't go back to the month before.
So where was that money sitting?
In the proprietary fund, so part of it is in the water fund and part of it was in the wastewater fund.
So if it was in the general fund, that would have gave us more in our...
Yes. We would have had $115,000 more in the general fund last year.
That'd been almost one more percentage point.
Half, half one, half of one, right?
It'd be two-thirds.
Would it have been a full one? So.
If it's about 159, something like that, 58? Okay, I just didn't know that.
Yeah. So then ambulance fees, court fines and costs, billing permits, and telephone wireless, grocery receipts tax, that is all, those are all not where we anticipated that they would be when we're looking at budget. And you can see overall, because we had some overages on our cash balances at March 31st, we're still in the positive, so it's not going to be where we have to immediately cut budget or anything like that. And that's just where we're trending at January 31st, and things can always change one way or another from month to month, just as revenues come in. So if you look at page 2, the Report of Cash Balances, you can see that last year at this time, we had $3,681,348 in the general fund. If you look at the pages that I put under your report from last year, our cash balance in the general fund was $3,681,348. This year at March, or at January 31st, it's $3,46,941, so that's $634,000 less.
And our variances on your other sheet show 459,000 that were down in the red.
450, whoa.
And so we're still down even though the variances were still another 100,000.
Well, we had budgeted for, to lose $700,000 plus. That's why we had to do the hiring freeze, yes. But those variances on that other sheet, Mayor, those are only revenues.
Right.
So, you know, when we're looking at our cash balance, not only our revenues, do our revenues matter, but so do our expenses. And so then if you look at the Report of Unreserved Fund Balances on page number three, you can see that we are at a 19% fund balance, and we were trending below 15% for several months there, and I kept saying, you know, property tax will come in and we'll be okay, and that happened. But last year at January 31st, we were at a 24.67% fund balance in the general fund. So that fund balance has dropped 5.61%.
You told us your crystal ball read 21%.
Um...
Do you remember your estimation was going to be 21?
Well, gosh, I was off by 2%.
Just thought I'd bring that up to you. That's, you know, $300,000. You're going to have to get that Windex out and see that crystal ball.
Yeah, I should not go buy any lottery tickets.
Oh, no.
And so, you know, this is really, I'm not concerned about anything. We kind of budgeted for these things. Some of our revenues are up, some of our revenues are down. All of the, none of this surprises me. I feel like it's all within budget, so, and that we expected all of this.
Questions? I like the compare and contrast, that really helps a lot. Let everybody digest it for a second. Anybody?
As far as our court fees and those estimate, how do you estimate those? Just strictly by trends from the past, or is there something else?
We do look at trends, and so...
And how far back do you go when you make those estimations?
We, we look at what has, what had been happening and what had been happening. Our violations that have been being filed with the court have been dropping off each year. At this point, we are 1,018 violations less that have been filed with the court through the first 10 months of this year when compared to the first 10 months of last year. And a couple of years ago, we increased court costs. We were able to increase it $10. We were not at the maximum. When Senate Bill 5 was passed, one of the things that happened was the court reviewed their fine schedule and their cost schedule, and they increased those fees. So a couple of years ago, we took historical trends and we added the $10 increase to what we expected and to receive. It's just that violations are, there are less violations that are being filed with the court. But we do look back a couple of years, and we try to find out what's going on.
And I know with Senate Bill 5, there's been a lot of changes to where we can really not only collect money possibly, but the expenses went up drastically, didn't they?
Well, what happened was they, defendants, or I guess not defendants at that point because they've, they are guilty and they have to pay the costs, they are allowed to enter payment plans if they can't, and the court has to work with them. That actually has not hurt our collections, so while our violations have been quite, that are filed, have been actually less, the completed cases have not dropped off yet to catch up with that because people have been paying on that payment plan. So you're going to see, and I am anticipating, that our court fines and cost revenues are going to drop off even more significantly as there just aren't as many payment plans to be entered into because there aren't as many violations being filed.
What do you mean by drop off?
So right now, because they are able to make payments over a longer period of time, there are people that are still continuing to make payments on cases from 18 months ago, or two years ago. As, when those get paid off, then there are not more violations and more, more payment plans that are taking, taking that place. So those revenues are going to drop off even more.
Okay. And as far as our costs go, have they, I know we made a lot of changes with the court, and we had to make some changes with personnel. Have our court, the actual cost for running the court and all that, is that settled out to where you can now estimate pretty accurately what it costs to run the court?
Yes. Let's, if you...
That's all I've got. Thank you.
If you don't, if you look at our budget, you can see, well, I'm going to, I have a lot of years of data here, but you can see that our court costs, the costs of running our court, starting in, you know, in fiscal year 14, it was 277,000, almost 278,000, and now you're looking at $433,000. I mean, the cost of personnel and benefits has definitely increased, and that was all because of Senate Bill 5 and the amount of time that it takes. Well, the reason...
That being said, it's nothing we had any say in. We decided to adhere to what the state dictated to.
Yes, and it was very important because if we are not doing, following those court rules, then what can happen is the Department of Revenue can actually stop our sales tax. And that's how we run our general fund. You know, a quarter of the, our budget in the general fund is from sales tax revenue, plus our street sales tax, plus our capital improvement sales tax, and our park sales tax. So we really didn't have any choice.
I understand. I'm just highlighting the fact that we have those costs that we don't really have any control over.
Yes.
Chief person?
I hate to be a doomsayer as far as municipal courts go, but I also sit on the Supreme Court Task Force on criminal justice reform, and one of the committees that I sit on is the fines, fees, and bail. And the, as the only law enforcement person sitting on that, and one of the only municipal court people, the feeling of the state is the same as the feeling nationwide in criminal justice reform, and that is that our municipal courts, if we're going to have municipal courts, should be mirroring our state courts much more closely. And at the state level, fines and fees do not go to the court. Fines and fees all go to the school districts. And the, because of the abuses that occurred in some of our municipal courts, particularly on the east side of the state, particularly in Ferguson, the thought of the Supreme Court and this committee is that the fines and fees should be taken away from municipal courts. And my argument is without those court costs, without those fines, it will make it very difficult, if not impossible, to operate municipal courts. Their belief is that one of the purposes of government is to provide for the courts and the court systems, and that all of those should come out of the general revenues of the government without consideration of court fines and fees. So what I'm saying is, moving forward, the last few years, we've had sort of the perfect storm going in Missouri. Because of the fines and fees, the decreased number of fines and fees, the decreased number of offenses being filed because of the fact that the officers are seeing the decline in the court sentences, the decline in the collection of fines, and then here in Belton, six fewer officers doing the work over the last year. So we have not had the number of summonses because of the fewer number of people, combined with the national trend of the fewer number of, or at least the Missouri trend, fewer number of municipal court cases being filed, and now the fact that they'll be going after the fines and fees that we are collecting right now. So in the, the Supreme Court's coming down with some new rules going into effect in July, then they'll be taking into consideration the recommendations of this task force that continues to meet, and so far, the recommendation is that those fines and fees not benefit the local municipal courts. So don't look for any increase in fines and fees.
Also, Chief, while you're there, legislative trend, we were talking all week in different groups about failure to appear. Are you privy to that one about what that's going to look like now?
In the meeting the other day, Judge Breckenridge, the Supreme Court judge and former head of the Supreme Court, talked about failure to appear, and she says that they put failure appear back into 572. I told her that while it may be there, it's still inadequate and is not being utilized the way it used to be. And the failure to, the trend nationally, and what is being recommended in Missouri, is that the number of cases that would generate a charging court will be reduced, and the fact that you don't appear in court, if it's strictly for a monetary reason, then the court would not issue a warrant for failure to appear or failure to pay fine. And so the number of cases that warrants and failure to appear and driver's license suspensions will go down, and the amount of money that will be collected through fines, fees, and bail will go down.
Thanks. Neat, huh? Well, the trend right now is a lot of people just don't go on failure, they just fail to attend because there's...
My point in the committee meetings has been that our constituents actually want tougher laws. They want more people arrested, they want more warrants issued, they want, they want things to be tougher, whereas the courts and those that administer the courts want things relaxed and want fewer fines, fewer people in jail. They're afraid that we're running debtors' jails and debtors' prisons.
Wow. Any comments or questions?
I have...
Yes, sir.
One question for the chief. I read somewhere about drug seizures, they're not going to allow to use the property or drug laws?
The federal court, the Supreme Court of the United States heard a case. Councilman Tressel and I were talking about that before the meeting started, and it's not that they are not going to allow seizures. The seizure has to be more related to the offense. The possession of a minor quantity of drugs should not equate to the seizure of a $40,000 vehicle, or $400,000 cash, or a house. The abuses of the past are what dictate the future. If a seizure can still clearly be tied to a criminal enterprise and the clear proceeds of a criminal enterprise, and that seizure equates to the level of crime, then it will still be allowed. Those cases where someone's house may be seized for, the anecdotal stories where someone's house is seized for a user quantity of marijuana would be an abuse of the system, and that is what will not be allowed.
That answer it? Anybody else over here? Moving along, where are we at? Oh, Councilman Tressel.
Chief, you're getting another question there. On these court fines, do you have information, I guess, we're not the only one facing this particular problem, I assume, as across the state?
It's across the state. The number of, I'm sure that Councilman VanWinkle has heard the term, the Ferguson Effect, and with law enforcement officers in particular, there's been a level of demoralization, and so there has been a tendency to actually write fewer summonses or arrest fewer people by some who feel that, why should I do that if they're just going to get off anyway?
So basically, what we ought to do as far as budgetary, we need to budget for a lot less than court fines, basically, what we should say, right?
I don't have a crystal ball. I've said for 31 years that the purpose... I don't have a crystal ball, I've said for thirty-one years that the purpose of law enforcement is not the gen- generation of, of revenue.
I understand, but realistically, we're talking about-
Over and over again.
Yeah, realistically, though, we're talking about not gonna happen.
We, we should not look for an increase in the amount of fines and fees.
Do you think we could budget another crystal ball for a general department?
If I did one for all of us.
Good questions, anybody else? Okay, with that, we're gonna earn, adjourn the work session, and then we're gonna turn right around and call the regular meeting to order, and at this time, we'd like for Councilman McPherson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilman Savage.
Here.
Councilman Lathrop.
Here.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Here.
Councilman Tretzel.
Here.
Councilman McPherson.
Here.
Councilman Finn.
Here.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Here.
Councilwoman Peak.
Here.
Consent agenda. One motion, non-debatable to prove the recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion passes. No personal appearances, ordinances. A, a motion approving the final reading of bill number two thousand nine oh eight.
Approving and redesignating redevelopment project two of the South Town Plaza TIF increment, tax increment financing redevelopment plan as a redevelopment project and adopting tax increment financing therein.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That motion passes. B, motion approving the final reading of bill number two thousand oh nine oh nine.
Approving and redesignating redevelopment project three of the South Town Plaza Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan as a redevelopment project and adopting tax increment financing therein. Present.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Councilman Van Winkle.
These tax increment financing, both on this ordinance and the previous, these were started when this isn't something that's recent, we're just, we're just carrying on what was already approved, what, back in, in two thousand nine, I believe? Okay, so, I didn't want anybody to think that we're starting new TIFs here, that this is something that's already been at, at play for quite a few years.
We haven't TIFTed in three years. Don't jinx us. Questions or comments? Seeing none.
Just for a moment.
I thought it was me. You're making me really nervous.
There we go. Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That motion passes. C, a motion approving the first reading of bill number two thousand nineteen oh eight.
An ordinance approving the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty city budget as revised and appropriating funds from the revenues of the city.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. D, a motion approving the first reading of bill number two thousand nineteen oh nine.
An ordinance amending sections forty-two dash thirty-six, rates inside the city, forty-two dash thirty-eight, water rates for approved water districts or local governments, forty-two dash thirty-nine, rates for water consumed outside city, forty-two dash two ninety-six, sewer system user rates of the Unified Development Code of the City of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. E, a motion approving both readings of bill number two thousand nineteen ten.
An ordinance amending chapter eleven, health and sanitation, article three, smoking, and chapter fifteen, offenses of the Code of Ordances of the City of Belton, Missouri, to implement the Tobacco Twenty-One Initiative.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Move for a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second, for a second reading, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Motion approving the second reading of bill number two thousand nineteen ten.
An ordinance amending chapter eleven, health and sanitation, article three, smoking, and chapter fifteen, offenses of the Code of Ordances of the City of Belton, Missouri, to implement the Tobacco Twenty-One Initiative.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? The city manager, the, uh, Project Twenty-One, how many cities around us have already adopted that initiative?
Well, the council may recall, um, we have at least two. We've got, um, Ray Moore and Peculiar that have passed it around, and, and actually, uh, Councilman Van Winkle came up to me before the meeting tonight and was just kind of, uh, we were both reminding each other of how this came to be. Um, last, uh, fall, um, Bridgette McCandless, who is with the Healthcare Foundation, and a representative from the Cass County Health Department came, um, and then there was also individuals from the Belton Cares that came and talked to the City of Belton about doing that initiative, and we were trying, all the cities were trying to do it at the same time, and so this came to you in a work session, and we discussed it. Unfortunately, we had to do a lot of deep diving into our codes because it affected a lot of different areas, as you can tell from, uh, Andrea, our city clerk, reading, uh, the different articles and the different sections that were impacted. So, those had to be, uh, revised and amended so that, um, when it goes to MuniCode, it, it's a little easier for that process, and so it took us a little longer to get there, uh, at that time than Ray Moore was already able to, and Peculiar were already able to get those passed. I will tell you, this has continued to be an interest, an item of interest. Uh, the Healthcare Foundation calls me about every two weeks about this, as does the Cass County Health Department and as does Belton Cares, so, uh, I'm sure they will appreciate the council passing this this evening.
The mayor gets those same things, and it's painful. Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Motion passes. F, motion approving both readings of bill number two thousand nineteen eleven.
An ordinance approving the agreement with Digitec Computer Incorporated for ambulance billing services.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Move for a second reading?
Second.
A motion and a second, for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. F, a motion approving the second reading of bill number two thousand nineteen eleven.
An ordinance approving the agreement with Digitec Computer Incorporated for ambulance billing services. Present.
Second.
Motion is second, discuss, discuss. Seeing none.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
That motion passes. G, a motion approving both readings of bill number two thousand nineteen twelve.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Tradition's second plat lots one hundred and eighty-eight through two hundred and one, two hundred and ten through two hundred and twenty, and tracks N through Q, a part of section eighteen, township forty-six, range thirty-two, Belton, Cass County, Missouri.
Present.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Move for a second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second, for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. G, a motion approving the second reading of bill number two thousand nineteen twelve.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Tradition's second plat lots one hundred and eighty-eight through two hundred and one, two hundred and ten through two hundred and twenty, and tracks N through Q, a part of section eighteen, township forty-six, range thirty-two, Belton, Cass County, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
That motion passes. H, a motion approving both readings of bill number two thousand nineteen thirteen.
An ordinance authorizing the chief of police to submit for grant applications to the Missouri Department of Transportation, Division of Highway Safety for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Move for a second reading?
Motion and a second, for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. H, a motion approving the second reading of bill number two thousand nineteen thirteen.
An ordinance authorizing the chief of police to submit for grant applications to the Missouri Department of Transportation, Division of Highway Safety for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Present. Second.
Send a second, so, any, any discussion at all? Seeing none.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
That motion passes. Hi, a motion approving both readings of bill number two thousand nineteen fourteen.
An ordinance approving an escrow agreement and a funding agreement related to an industrial development project for North Point Development LLC.
Present.
Second.
Motion is a second, discussion. Oh. Okay. Seeing none? Did somebody's phone go off? Okay.
No.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Super second reading?
Second.
Motion is second, for a second reading, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. I, a motion approving the second reading of bill number two thousand nineteen fourteen.
An ordinance approving an escrow agreement and a funding agreement related to an industrial development project for North Point Development LLC.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Councilman Savage.
City manager, I think you talked to me about this, would you describe what's going on here?
Uh, yeah, this is a, an agreement with, um, North Point, um, for, uh, earlier, the finance director, uh, referred to a project that we are receiving grant dollars for to, uh, do the road from one hundred fifty-fifth to one hundred sixty-third, um, and this portion, um, the city is actually doing from one hundred fifty-fifth to about where the entrance is at, and then from one hundred sixty-second to one hundred sixty-third, with North Point having the responsibility for the section for the new part of the road that's going to go, that will connect that outer road. This is an agreement that will outline that, uh, funding agreement that they're, that they are responsible for that portion of the road, and that the city is responsible for our, our portion of the road.
Thank you, I just thought that needed to be said.
Thank you.
I, I have one question on that too, while you're, while you're explaining it. This is something that Belton is not putting any money into, it's all being funded?
Um-
The grants and the owner?
Okay, that's correct? Okay. Yeah, and that was the whole point, was that we wanted, uh, to be able to have, um, and that's why we put this agreement into place, was we wanted to make sure that North Point was, uh, because they agreed to doing the road, we wanted to make sure that, uh, our grant carried part of it, and North Point did the other part.
Well, somebody was concerned about how much money we were spending on that, and I tried to explain that, I was pretty sure it was all funded.
Yeah, that was part of the agreement upfront, was that, um, North Point would assist with that.
Thank you.
And, and the city did do our due diligence in helping to get a grant for that.
Sheila, you got any more on that?
On the body, yes?
Sure. Either and/or.
Okay. Um, so, the outer road, um, I think it's gonna connect all the way from one hundred and fifty-fifth to one hundred and sixty-third street when we're all done, so that's really great. Originally, we just talked about doing everything north of one hundred and sixty-second, but after, um, negotiating and discussing with North Point, they realized the benefit of that too, so we're gonna be doing that part. The asphalt is thin, and so we're gonna, they're gonna reconstruct the asphalt, they're gonna put in some curb, they're going to, um, do drainage, um, and that's pretty, um, that's pretty much it, it's kind of a basic project, but once that's done, um, in exchange for the cost shares, that it will be turned over to the city.
Sure. So, what are you talking about, when you say drainage, you, you bring up a subject, so you're doing, you're doing storm drainage, you're piping it all the way out, where's it going to?
Okay, so, um, I just remembered, I knew there was something I missed, but we're widening the road from about, it's either twenty or twenty-two, it depends on the location, to twenty-four, so by widening the road, we're just, um, going to go ahead and regrade to extend the ditches, so we don't plan on putting any pipe, we're just grading the, the ditches to make sure it drains.
So, it's, so, there we go, some more road ditches. And twenty-four?
They're already there. We're just-
I understand that.
Okay.
We're just improving them to have more road ditches.
Um, well, because we're widening it, we have to change the grade a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so why not twenty-eight? Like, everybody else has to do?
Twenty, twelve, twelve-foot lanes are the standard.
Twelve and twelve and no curb?
Um, with the curb.
Okay.
It'll be twelve lanes and with the curb.
Okay.
Two feet of curb on each side.
Sheila, you got anything on this?
Yes, thank you, that would be matching.
I was trying to read your body language. You got nothing? Okay? Anything else?
So, I'm, 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 yeah, I'm even more confused.
Okay.
Pardon me, we're gonna do curbs and ditches at the same time, I mean- Exactly.
Okay, so, we're putting curb and gutter on one side, and we're putting ribbon curb on the other side. Originally, their design, they weren't gonna put in anything, and they had these little rock flooms, like, every hundred feet, and it looked really terrible, and so we wanted to make it look a little nicer with the development, so curb and, we could do, uh, curb and gutter on each side, but then we're addressing stormwater and putting an inlet, so we're gonna put curb and gutter on one side, and then the ribbon curb, so it just flows off into the ditches.
And the curb and gutter is on the east side with the curb and the, um, inlet on the west side, where it would drain out to, um, MoDOT's. Cause MoDOT's will still have their right of way through there because of the interstate, right?
So, you're gonna drop the curb and gutter then and come under the, under the street over to the west side, is that what you're gonna do? What are you going to do with the water off the curb and gutter? Maybe that'd be a better question.
It's going to drain off to the other side.
So the road won't be crowned? It'll be, it'll drain all the way to the west?
So you're just curbing it and shooting it across the street?
That's what I hear.
No crown, which is what you just said.
Right.
Okay.
Is that where it was before?
It was, it was crowned.
It's a.
Okay. I meant, the water flow went that way. My question is, it doesn't go to Oil Creek though?
I don't know. MoDOT always handled all the drainage before, but I'm assuming it goes to Oil Creek.
I'd think how that led.
I don't know for sure.
Good to know.
I think it'll still go to the same location it went to before.
Yeah, I don't know if it's Oil Creek or not.
I'm thinking that it's lower there, the elevation though, than the other side. So I'm thinking maybe it's like you said before, I just have to get out and look at it.
And we're starting preliminary engineering, and what we're trying to do because of, we've already approved the design contract, and what we're trying to do is, because we're trying to work with North Point's schedule to get the road completed by October, which is not difficult, except that MoDOT has to approve everything, and they can be very slow in their process. So we're trying to design it such that we don't need easements, because if we need easements, then that really extends the time. So we're going to wait and design it, and see what we can do to minimize or eliminate that.
Councilman Lathrop.
I have one more question. Are we going to have a sidewalk or a walking trail?
North Point will be putting the walking trail on their property.
Other questions? Councilman Tretzel.
On the design, is, is North Point doing their own design, and then latching up with Missouri? Or is Missouri doing the whole design?
Olson's doing the design for all of the projects. And that's one reason we selected them, because they were already the designer for the portion that North Point's building.
Thank you.
Questions over here?
I got one more now. That walking trail, is that public use, or is that private property on that?
It's on private property, but it's for public use.
It's for public use on their private property? And they'll maintain it?
They originally wanted it on ours, and I know Dave worked diligently with them to have it on their property.
Okay, great.
So, but it's for the public.
It's for the public on their private property that they maintain?
Right.
Fantastic. So, it's a benefit?
Right.
Sir.
And that is the way it was planned on the backside. So they're just joining up on the front side along that road, I would guess. So, they're, they're doing, point being is they're doing generally what they said they would do, and generally plus a little bit, it sounds like, right now.
Right.
It's going to be hard to get a trail out, out north of, over to Allen because Dave's got that high berm and that, those trees, that they'll never get through that forest.
Well, they, they're designing that. Because we have to put utilities in there anyway, so they're designing it to be able to have that.
I was being facetious, okay.
They'll figure it out.
All right.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman McPherson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
That motion passes. Resolutions, do we have any resolutions?
Nope.
City Council liaison, Park?
I have quite a bit.
They're loading you up.
I know, right? So regarding the High Blue Wellness Center, there's an annual event called Let's Move, which will run March 11th through the 30th. If they want park board members and staff to contribute 2,000 moves a day, I'll see what I can do. We can supply a smart key for those use in three weeks. They're also doing the Biggest Loser competition. Participants are working hard. So far, the group has lost a combined total of 218 pounds. They've had a lot of positive feedback on the Facebook page as well. They're getting ready to launch a new program called Rev It Up. This will begin in April to piggyback off of the Biggest Loser competition they currently have running. The, the program will keep people progressing and will be open. Epic programs, all of the programs are going well, and have had a lot of positive feedback, especially with the youth programs. They also have, well, they did have the Share the Love campaign for the month of February. That was a promotion. They gave out more than 200 guest passes to everyone that attended classes so they could invite a potential member to visit High Blue. So that was well received. Let's see here. The Daddy Daughter Dance was this past weekend and had an awesome turnout. Those photos are up on Facebook for anybody interested. Lot of couples attended. They have the Easter egg hunt coming up. This will be the 12th Annual Easter Egg Hunt. It'll be at Memorial Park on Saturday, April 13th at 10:00 a.m. They're finalizing some summer events. They have Summer Fest, which will be one day this year, which will be Saturday, June 15th. So one day instead of two days. Theater in the Park, Friday, June 21st. They're also kind of finalizing plans to do a summer carnival, which would be Thursday through Saturday, August 15th through the 17th. I'm sure that will be the hottest days of the year. And then Theater in the Park, Friday, October 13th. And then Oktoberfest, my favorite, Saturday, October 14th. And they have more, more things to come. And you can always refer to their Facebook page. They post all of their events there. Let's see. Oh, they have a, they have a pretty cool thing coming up. It's called, I don't know who's familiar with it, but KCXW's April Slam 2019. And that'll be on Saturday, April 13th, in the gym there at High Blue Wellness, beginning at 5:00 p.m. It's a pro wrestling event hosted by Kansas City Extreme Wrestling. They'll do some cross promoting, including appearances at Kids Night Out and more. And just an update on maintenance. Obviously, we've had a lot of snow and ice removal. They did finish up the LED light retro at the indoor pool. There's been storm cleanup. The walls and floors were painted in the concession stands. Men's bathroom walls were painted. So also painting on windows to be installed, or waiting on windows to be installed. So a lot of good things and improvements to our facilities.
That was a mouthful.
Yes, it was.
How about any other liaison reports? Councilwoman Peak. What about Belton Cares? You go to those meetings, you're the chief person generally. Anything that we need, I know they have a trivia night coming up.
Trivia night will be Friday night. It'll be at Memorial Station. The doors open at 5:30, and the games will begin at 6:00. We would invite any of you all to come and sponsor a table. It, it's always a lot of fun. Last somewhere hour and a half or so. There'll be some light snacks served, and lots of fun trivia questions.
I don't have fun, our team is always last.
Well, we've got an oversight committee checking the questions now to make sure that they weren't, weren't you on the first one we did? Weren't you on that team that won?
I've, I've been either on a winning team or a second-place team some years.
You understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
So what era are most of your questions?
The year that we won, we swept the Belton history question, mainly because I'd been around for most of the Belton history, so.
Loaded question, just not fair. No, that's a great thing.
Troy Shaw actually comes up with a number of the questions, and the students will be also providing a number of questions this year, so.
Oh, good lord, that's, wow. Just give your money away, because it'll be tough. You got to know that. But it's a lot of fun. And what I encourage you all with Belton Cares, you got anything you want to say about Belton Cares? You go. It's good stuff. It's really good for our kids. And I've got Mayor's Communications Advisory Committee. I'll come right back to you. When are we going to do those interviews with Advisory Committee for the Half-Cent Sales Tax?
They start tomorrow. They'll be tomorrow, Friday, and then we'll skip a week, and then they'll finish up. We'll have them on the 13th and the 15th, and the names will be announced at the March 26th meeting.
And the winner is, okay, that's good. Councilwoman Davidson's on that committee too. So we'll be getting that done, so you'll know who your committees are coming for that, for the half-cent oversight. Then, today I was really pleased and honored to be again in the Mayor's Day of Prayer down at the Bartle Hall. It was, it was really a highly participated group, and it was a spiritual movement, and it was a great time. A lot of peers there, that it was important, and felt really good about it. And it was, had a special speaker today that did an outstanding job. So we were at the Mayor's Day of Prayer, early this morning. I had to be down there at 6:30. So that's real early praying. So it was a good time, though. It was outstanding. Also, on Saturday, I was honored to be the judge again for the annual chili supper, or dinner with the Lions Club. And there were 21 chilis that you have to sample as a judge. So I went through four tums before I even got to the halfway post. You know, you have different categories, and it's instant heartburn. But it was well-attended, big crowd at the community center, outstanding, different types of chili. And it was a good spirited group. And they raised a bunch of money. And the Rolocks, I think, doubled. They matched anything that they collected. So they, they made a good turnout. It was really a good time. Okay, City Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to remind the council again that our meetings in March are the 12th and 26th, and April are the 9th and 23rd. Some additional items, as I stated in the last meeting's report, the bulky pickup for Mondays will be April 5th, and for Tuesdays will be April 19th. We were unable to get those dates timely enough to be able to put postings into the water bills. So if, we have posted it to the city's website, as well as our Facebook page. So any of the council that has information or has a site, if you could please share that with your constituents, that would be very helpful, so that we can get the word out. And we will continue to do our best, and we've got flyers at both the Annex and City Hall to be able to help promote those dates. We've also been trying to provide at least a couple more Saturdays for storm cleanup. Unfortunately, Mother Nature is not, you know, helping us. This last Saturday, when we tried to do it, it rained all day. And this weekend's forecast is for snow. More than likely, if that forecast stays solid, we will be canceling it yet again, because those individuals that typically work that are usually out pushing snow. So please be sure to look at the city's website and Facebook pages.